Okay, calls to all the city of Forest Park Council work session, December 21st, 2020. We have eh one item below the line, special assessment liens, that will be Councilwoman Moore. Uh, Councilwoman Moore, do you, I don't know if Chris is on here somewhere yet or not.
I don't think so.
You probably, you'll probably be here for the meeting part. Councilwoman Moore, you got anything you want to tell us about this in particular?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just part of our annual physical responsibility. Um, placing special assessment on properties where the city had to expend general public dollars to correct, clean up, otherwise maintain private properties that have fallen in despair and code violations. We currently have about fourteen properties, um, representing about three thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cent. Um, although few of these may be, um, paid off before the liens, um, are actually filed. And staff recommends, uh, council's passage of this resolution.
We will, we will do that when we get into the meeting.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask a question about this?
Yes.
Uh, is this something that is COVID related or they weren't done before that? Or this is something that goes back before COVID?
We have liens, we have a list of liens.
We have liens every year.
I know we have liens every year, but I'm asking this year specifically, there's some leniency uh, on them. So that's why I'm asking.
Uh, I would imagine, and I, Don, you might know, but I, generally speaking, when it gets to this point, it's been an ongoing process where, where these people have known that this is coming and they just haven't, uh, done it.
That's correct. Uh, we, we held off on, uh, during the summer and enforcement of, of some, a lot of the grass ordinances. Mainly because of, you know, people would call and say they just couldn't get anybody to number one come. Or they, they wouldn't, they couldn't get out and get their own, um, uh, cut it themselves. So this is routine. Uh, a lot of these, and not, not knowing which fourteen we have here, but a lot of these are, are properties that we maintain all year. Um, and they, and this is sort of a routine that we just get in because the owners are either out of town or dead or, um, and, and they kind of know it's going to happen and it just continues every year. And, um, so a lot of these are, are the same folks over and over again, that we just put them on a schedule and just know we have to cut them. Um, so, so they start, this is basically from the summer on. So it was during the pandemic, that, that these were cut. I don't think they're a result of the pandemic though.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was not something that was putting undue burden on the, you know, the residents at that time. I mean, you know, during the time of the pandemic, but it, as long as you say this is something that has been gone on, going on before that, then I'm okay with that.
Oh yeah, it's, it's, um, this happens, this is basically happens every year.
Yeah.
That same amount. So a lot of times it's the same people.
Okay, right. I understand it happens every year. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, you know, it's, as long as it's the same people, then, then I'm okay with that. It has nothing to do with the virus.
We can look into it if it, if it, if there is some issues and folks calling and, um, you know, and they've got a, a virus issue or virus, I wouldn't want to say excuse, but an explanation. Um, then there's ways we can, uh, then we can take care of that as well if we have to after the fact. But I believe most of these are, are a result of, uh, the routine folks who just normally just don't cut their grass.
Yeah.
All right, you got about one minute to go, Herbie.
I would say that, um, I, I, I think it's the fewest that I've seen in many years. Cause usually I think the list is much, much longer.
It is.
I will say this, that, um, um, it's part of the pandemic, we, we, there's people disagree with this, but, um, I think a lot of folks, cause they were home, um, more, I think the grass was actually getting cut more often. Uh, and we, and obviously we gave people a lot of leadway this summer. Uh, just because, because number one, we didn't want to send anybody to, you couldn't get anybody or send anybody. Remember we, June, April, May, June, the growing season, um, there were, there's a lot of restrictions on just getting out.
Yeah.
You know, so, so having people come by and cut it and we didn't want to send somebody by somebody's house. And so we, we, I think we did a, a pretty good job and, you know, and being really lenient this year. And, uh, but I think a lot of these, again, as I said, a lot of these folks are, we put them on a schedule because we, they're just never, you know, it's worked out with the owner or with whoever's in charge and we just have to do it. And there's a few of those every year that we have, that we just routinely cut. And then this is how we collect our money.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we will, there's no other discussion on this. We'll, in a few seconds, it'll be seven o'clock and we'll be going into the regular meeting. Calls to all the city of Forest Park, council meeting number thirteen sixty-six, December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, let's see, Councilwoman Herbie, would you do the, leave us with the pledge?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
I thought I am muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, yes, States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God. In the rule with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, I think in the future, starting at the first of the year when we do this, I will ask one person to say it and the rest of us will just kind of wait. I mean, just kind of.
Let that person say it.
Yeah, yeah, for all of us.
For all of us.
Okay, uh, would the clerk please call the row?
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
So, Bassler.
Here.
Let the record show that all council members are present. We would move then to item number three, number two, actually, the minutes. You would have gotten copies of your minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is presentation, December business of the month. And this is the animal care center, Forest Park. I don't think Paul is here, but we will make sure that they get their, uh, proclamate, uh, get their, uh, plaque for being the December business of the month. We'll move next to item number four, communications from the public. Uh, Mr. Jones, did you get anybody? Or communications from the public?
No, we've had no communication from the public with regards to, uh, this meeting.
Okay, very good. Then we would move to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first of those is community development, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first I want to say just a special thank you to, um, We Thrive Forest Park, Woodwood School District and our many, many, many business, um, partners in the community. We blessed eight families today, um, for the holidays. And so it took a community effort. And I just want to say how thankful I am for our community leaders and our community partners for making sure that our families are taking care of this, um, holiday. And I also want to wish everyone a happy holiday and also, also a happy new year. And so, um, that completes my, oh, I'm sorry. I also want to thank Officer Davis and Assistant Fire Chief Hill. Um, they made all the drops to get today to the families. Um, and so we really, truly, truly appreciate all their hard work and commitment and dedication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing none, Councilwoman Moore, we, we will come back from the break on a work session, I believe. Do you have any items for that work session?
Uh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Next report would be Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
Thank you. I do not have a, a human resource report tonight. However, the beautification commission, we did go out last Wednesday night. We went in our separate cars. It was a bad night to be out there, but most of, uh, most of us did go out and judge the houses that requested that they be judged and took pictures of those houses and got them back to Rachel. And suggested what they should be, what category they fell on. So we did get out and do that. And there was some, um, some members of the community that were saying like, wow, we're so excited you're here, but we're, we're not expecting you to be here tonight because the weather is so bad. So I guess that just showed the commitment that we have towards going through and following through on that particular, you know, um, mission that we have set. So with that, it would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have no item for you as well. Do you have anything to add?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next committee is Mr. Brown Law Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any, uh, reports at this time, but I do want to give a congratulations and a thank you to the school board and Forest Park City staff. Uh, council members actually had the privilege of touring the new school facilities that are being built, um, over in Green Hills and as well as in, in front of, uh, the high school. Um, so I do want to, you know, congratulate Don for going over there, always checking on that and being the, the school board for, um, the, the work and, you know, tireless dedication to the project. I mean, it just really goes to show the commitment that, um, Forest Park as a whole has to, um, providing a, 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 a safe and inclusive and, you know, beautiful facility, um, for our children of this community. Um, uh, I just think that when it finally does open up to the public, everyone is going to be, uh, very surprised at all of the amenities that the children will have access to, um, and just the amount of time and, and effort and dedication that goes into making sure that our school district, um, has all the resources for their children to grow and thrive, uh, for years to come. Um, it was just really a beautiful facility, but that's all that I had to say at that, at this time. And I have no items to add to the agenda also.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, then we would go to the next report, public improvement at facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, follow-up comments. I did, uh, send a communication to the city manager, uh, on the comments I made from our last, uh, uh, council meeting, uh, about the traffic, uh, issues with, uh, holding this in Hanover. And, uh, and just to, uh, add in response to, uh, what Councilman Brown a comment in regards to our, our, uh, high school and, and I didn't get a chance to make it over to the middle school, but, uh, I'm encouraged, uh, by what we're seeing, the growth of our, uh, our community and, and, uh, the hopefulness for our students for the future. Uh, I think we probably be in good position as we blessed and moving into our senior years of age that we'll, uh, develop some youth that'll, uh, that'll continue to, uh, to do good for this community as we're, what we're trying to do. So we're encouraged and we, uh, we thank our, uh, uh, school staff for their diligence and their work. And, uh, we just keep hope alive. And, uh, happy holidays to all of our residents of City of Forest Park. That concludes my comments.
Questions for Mr. Sylvester? Hearing none, Mr. Sylvester, I have no item for you. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you, sir. The next report is public safety, Councilwoman Clark.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a very brief, um, report at this time. So, um, as you all know, we met on December fourth and we, uh, had some updates on, uh, various things that our department's doing, uh, to increase and maintain safety for the city. Um, one of those things was the, um, issue, um, concerning the body cameras, which, uh, we do not have at this time. Um, we've got thirty-seven officers, but it is something that, um, something that they, they want to work through. Uh, as I mentioned in our last meeting, there was a, um, there were two grants that were applied for, um, one, um, one rather recent. And unfortunately we did not, uh, we did not receive those. So I am seeking, um, some, um, alternatives or at least, um, there's some other organizations that have hooked up, um, Ham, I'm sorry, for the county that we could potentially, um, get funds from. And so I have, um, the letter drafted and so we are, um, you know, looking to, um, certainly try to be in the pool to be able to receive, uh, those funds as we need them. Um, that would be all, um, concerning public safety. Uh, I would like to say a huge congratulations to our school district. Um, as Aaron, um, Mr. Brown already mentioned, we had the privilege of walking through the facilities at the middle school and the high school. Absolutely beautiful. Um, one thing that I was not aware of, uh, that the public perhaps isn't as, uh, either, is that that auditorium was actually not, um, the budget for that auditorium was not included, uh, when the state, uh, you know, delved out that money for this new facility. And so kudos to the school district, uh, because they took it upon themselves to seek out additional funding, um, which is, you know, I'm not exactly sure how much that was, but if you all, when you all get a chance to look at it, the public, you will see that it is well into, it's probably close to six-figure facility because that auditorium is beautiful. And I'm talking about the auditorium for the musicals and things like that. Um, so I really appreciate that work. Um, second thing to note that at the, the primary building, we know that the, um, the health services will be in that facility. And that was, you know, some of us were chagrined about that because of course, um, you know, Forest Park really helped to push this, uh, levy through for passage. Uh, the good news is, is, uh, we will be receiving some sort of a health, uh, health center, um, in time, uh, at the high school building. So I'm excited about that and I appreciate that they heard the community's, um, voice on that and making sure that they provide, uh, the best care possible to our kids. They've done a ve- very good job.
Any questions for Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have anything to add?
I do not, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mr. Johnson.
Next report waves of means, Councilwoman Urban.
Um, yes, I, uh, too had the opportunity to tour the high school and, um, uh, junior high, middle school facility here in Forest Park. Um, and I'm not going to add to what others have said. I wanted to go on to report some environmental awareness, uh, things. Uh, we had a, a review of July to September impact of the, uh, institution of the electrical, uh, energy aggregation, uh, program. And the total quarterly community savings was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. That comes out to about forty-one dollars per household for a household, individual household savings of an average of fifteen percent. So that, uh, energy aggregation for electricity is working, uh, on behalf of our citizens. Also, um, the leaf collection that, uh, with the environmental awareness, uh, program teamed up with people working cooperatively, uh, to help clean gutters and rake yards for residents in need, uh, occurred over two weekends in November and twenty-six houses were served. Two hundred and seventy-eight, uh, bags of leaves were collected for a total of over two tons of leaves collected. Also, I wanted to remind people that Christmas tree collection drop-off will begin, uh, December twenty-sixth and run through January tenth. People can bring their, um, uh, trees over to Kemper Meadow Park, uh, where they will be shredded. Um, I also wanted to make mention of this, that this has been an extraordinarily difficult year for our residents and our businesses because of the impact of COVID. And, uh, not just here, of course, but also throughout the whole country. And I want to say a great deal of thanks to the people who've had to work on the front lines. Uh, the, the, particularly the health workers and the police and fire who are, uh, put at great risk because of this. I also want to thank all those community organizations, churches that have stepped up to help those people who are in need, also economically because of the fallout of this. And finally, I want to wish people a very happy holiday and a very, hopefully much better new year.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, I have no item for you to have any to add. Okay, thank you. The next report is, you know, intergovernmental, intergovernmental communication and relations. That's mine. I have no report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Seeing no questions, we will move to item number six, the mayor's report. Uh, again, not, not to be repetitive, but, uh, I, I want to thank all of the council members and our staff who, uh, took advantage of, of, of the tour of the, uh, school facilities. Obviously, uh, when they were putting this together and dividing up, quote, the people who were to go where, uh, because we are so much larger than the other communities and so much, uh, bigger than theirs, uh, not of, not all of us were assigned together. Some of us were assigned to first go to the middle school and then to the high school. Many of us were, I should say, many of you were able to do both. Unfortunately, I was not because of other city commitments. But, uh, and in terms of, of thanking people, uh, I would be remiss if, uh, I did not take this opportunity during this holiday season to ask the public to join me in thanking our staff and our council members for going ahead with a job, jobs that had to be done during this, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, it is very, very stressful and it's very hard. Uh, we don't have the luxury of saying we're just not going to go today, uh, or that we're not going to do our jobs. Because when, when the staff and council does not do their jobs, then the services do not get provided to our community. And it's, it's been very important and it's always been uppermost, uh, for us to make sure that those services continue. You know, uh, I, I, every week, I am in a number of virtual meetings. I'm in meetings with the mayors. I've been meeting with Hamelin County. I'm in the, you know, some of the, uh, the governor's staff meetings. And when I listen to some of those folk talk about all of the problems that they are having and how difficult it is for them to continue to do what they do. Uh, unfortunately, in some cases, it's because they're so small that they don't have the people to do what needs to be done. In other ca, you know, when, if you are a city government with ten, twelve employees, uh, and one of those people tests positive and you have to start quarantining everybody they've come in contact with, you're basically talking shutdown. In some other cases, you'd, uh, people cannot work from home as our people were able to do because from a technological standpoint, they just aren't equipped to do it. So I, I count us as being blessed in being able to move forward and continue. Now, I, I think, you know, in talking to people throughout the community, the only thing that they have said that might even sound a little bit negative is, well, the building wasn't open. They never say they didn't get served or they didn't get what they needed. Uh, it's just, well, the building was, wasn't open. Well, the building wasn't open because we wanted you and our employees to be safe. You still got what you needed to get and you're going to continue to get what you need to get. Uh, I know that the vaccines are out there and, and some of that has started. I know that our, uh, first responders are in line to start, uh, that process, but that's not the end of the pandemic. If anything, at the very, at, at most, it might be the beginning of the end. We still have to be, have to do our due diligence. Still have to wear our masks. We still have to, uh, maintain our social distance. We still have to do all those things. And above all, we still have to provide services to the city. So I want to personally thank our staff and our volunteers, as well as those, you council members for making sure that Forest Park remains Forest Park. Uh, cause we could have easily fallen by the wayside and, and given up on some things, but we didn't. And quite frankly, we've been very fortunate, uh, as a city in that although Don and a few other people have contacted it, most of our people did not. And when it, when it happened in, in Forest Park, it happened because it was brought into us, not, uh, us giving it out to somebody else. So with that, I will say, thank you again. I will also say, uh, have a happy holiday season, whether it's Christmas, Quanza, or just past Hanukkah. Or if there are some other named holidays out there that comes in this time of year that I don't know about. Everybody enjoy it, but enjoy it safely. Uh, it's not going to hurt us to not gather with the whole family, you know, all forty of us at, you know, in a room that's equipped for six. It's not going to hurt us to miss that this, this, this season. Because if we miss it this season, maybe we'll all be around next season to do it like we've always done it in the past. Uh, that will end my report. I will answer any questions if there are any. Thank you. We will now move to item number seven, city manager's report. Welcome. Good to see you, Mr. Jones. Go right ahead.
Well, I, you know, Mayor, I don't think I could, uh, say it any better than you just did, but, uh, um, again, we want to thank, um, our employees, our city council, leadership from the mayor, and, uh, not to mention our churches and nonprofits, uh, who have really, really stepped up over the last year, um, to fill the gap of, um, of, of some of the problems that, uh, not only the country's having, but they're, they're prevalent here as well, whether it's hunger or, um, testing or healthcare or whatever. And I think, uh, you know, we've got a lot of city council members who have been active. We've got a lot of local nonprofits and churches who have been leading the way as well. So we want to thank them, um, from the city for the things they do for the city that a lot of times people just, uh, really don't notice and kind of, uh, forget about. But this is a kind of a time of the year that we need to remember, um, and reflect back on, um, not only the bad things this year from the pandemic and all the problems we've had, but, uh, the good things, the way people have stepped up and helped. Uh, particularly our, our staff, we're able to do some of the things that, uh, maintain our services that the mayor's been talking about. Mainly because of the flexibility of our staff. Our people are public servants first and they're here to serve the public. And, uh, they're not, and that's what they think of first. And I think they've really, really stepped up, whether that's working from home, doing, taking on different roles, moving desks, um, moving, uh, places where they work. And, um, with the main thing, you're right, the building has been closing, continues to be closed. Um, but we're able to, to service the public and provide the ser, the types of services that the, that the public is, uh, expects. And, um, and we're able to do that. And that's our number one priority is to keep our people safe and to keep the public safe while providing the services that they expect. And, uh, so I just want to wish everyone a happy Christmas and a happy new year. And hopefully we'll have a, a, a much better, uh, new year as we come, if, if the, uh, pandemic kind of eases off, but, you know, take it from me firsthand, uh, you don't want to catch this stuff. And it is out there and no matter how you try and what precautions you take and wear a mask and everything, it can still sneak up on you. So don't, um, don't take it for granted. We're almost over the hump and, um, and, you know, and, uh, be really, really safe this, uh, this Christmas and New Year's holidays and make sure you don't have those big gatherings. Uh, that'll, that'll, like, like the mayor says, we want to make sure everybody's here next year to do it right. So, uh, other than that, I'd be willing to take any questions.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I have, I have one question.
Yeah, I have one question. First, Doc, I do want to say thank you for working tirelessly as you do. I mean, I mean, you, you look, look great, look like you're beating this thing. Yeah, I I did want to know though, and I'm not sure if you have this information just yet, but as we know, the Senate has recently just approved another stimulus bill and and now the House is is going back and reworking the one that they approved nine months ago. Are you aware of, because I I've heard that a part of the stimulus is going to be extending the deadline for the original CARES Act funding? I remember the deadline was going to be the thirty first, but now they're saying they're going to extend it. Are you aware if the city is expected to receive more funding or if we have any still unused funds from the CARES Act?
We, 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 we are going to receive, I forget the number, but we are going to see, I think, another hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that we expect to receive. We received notice from the county a couple of weeks ago. And we are, as, as, I'll bring this up now, is the, we're asking for a special council meeting on the twenty eighth because we do need to change some of those deadlines that we put into our ordinances and resolutions because they are being extended. And so we'll need to change our resolutions to to account for the, some of the new deadlines. The CARES Act, from my understanding, when I was reading through it today and trying to find as much as I could, one of the compromises, I believe, was that funding for state and local governments, which was being fought for, was taken out of this recent one, but they expect it to be in the, in the next one, which will be, they, they've even sent an even bigger stimulus package. So we hope that there'll be more funds available for, for state and local governments that can help us. The majority of our funds, you know, they, they, a lot of them were tied to specific types of expenditures. We've tried to invest those funds and for the long term, and a lot of ours are capital improvements like our building. So that that building will be available and and we won't have to go through this. It's available to use and keep people safe, for instance, our tax office. And, you know, and our, and other offices within the, and within the, within the building so that we can have that social distancing and have people working in there that aren't on top of each other open areas. So we're, we're spending a lot, some of our money on that. And the majority of it's gone as a, is basically to pay for first responders and our police department, the remainder of it. So we've, we'll, we're bringing a lot of information to the next council meeting with regards to exactly where we spent all the money. And we'll be changing the deadlines as well. So you're correct. We do have a little bit more leadway in terms of how we'd have to do it and when we have to spend it. So and we hope to not only with the one that we just received, the announcement from the county, but we hope to be able to receive some substantial dollars next year through the, through any kind of new funding that that happens at the, at the federal level.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Yes, just this last one. Mr. Jones, do you know of whether or not the city has been keeping track of what's happened or what the impact has been to our business community at all with the pandemic, if there's any sort of impact or analysis that was, that's being performed?
Well, Paul has been keeping track. He, he's, he's the boots on the ground, our economic development director. He is, he's in contact with a lot of the, and most of the businesses in the community. In terms of impact, we've not seen a direct impact where anybody has said that they're out of business because of it. But we have seen and heard a significant amount of hardship and and lost revenue. And and so I can have him quantify that as part of, as part of these reports, but we did do a grant program earlier this year. I think we gave out, I'm going to forget the number, but between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars. I think it was close to thirty-five. And and we asked folks to, you know, to to apply for them and tell us what they needed. And so, yes, there's a lot of small businesses, a lot of restaurants that then not the chain ones, a lot of the small ones are locally owned that that are struggling. And and we know that, but we can't put a, we'll try and put a number on that. We haven't seen anybody going out of business that has been specific because of, of, of the COVID or any kind of issues with regards to that.
I would, I would add to that, Don. One of the, one of the problems in trying to do this, Councilwoman Clark, is, well, the last thing that Don just said. What we do know is a lot of corporate, a lot of corporate headquarters are making decisions where businesses, where franchises are going to be closing. It's not necessarily because those franchises were not doing good business or it's not necessarily because of the pandemic. But just like with us, the city and other governmental agencies, we have adapted to things in the pandemic. You know, this, this meeting is an example of an adaptation. A lot of corporates are saying, we're learning things from this pandemic in terms of what's the best way we need to be running our businesses. Some corporates have decided that they overall, bottom line, in terms of income, they do better with just strictly drive-through than they would trying to do drive-through and inside services because you don't have to have as many people. You don't have as much overhead. So they are making a conscious business choice to adapt models. So in, in, you know, when, when Paul is, is doing his, is gathering his information, that has to be taken into account too. Did they close because the pandemic forced them out of business? Or is corporate making the decision because, because corporate sees a way that they can do better financially and not lose money or not spend as much? You know, a lot of time in business is not about how much money you lose. It's about, I didn't make as much as I thought I was going to make. So those two things kind of, kind of go together. But, yeah, we, we've had some hits out there, but they aren't necessarily hits as a result of, directly as a result of the pandemic. Okay, we will next move to item number eight of the reports. First of all, then our law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. As the mayor requested, I might just briefly address this vaping issue. Vaping, whether it's the distribution, sale, or use of vape materials and products, is governed by the laws of the state of Ohio. Those are what we refer to as general laws of the state. And as a charter community, we cannot pass any legislation contrary to the general laws of the state. As an example, in the sale of cigarettes, if the state determines that a hundred vendors in the city of Forest Park should have a license to sell cigarettes, we can't restrict the number of those vendors. And that's the same with vaping. You might see vaping products at gas stations and grocery stores and separate vape shops. Those are all governed by the state of Ohio. So we cannot, you know, under the state, they have age twenty-one. We can't do anything about that. They have no flavor vaping products. We can't change that or do anything contrary to that. So our hands are kind of tied in that this is a product part of the state economy that's governed by the state legislative body. If there are any questions, I'd answer that, but that would be my, the end of my report.
So are you saying that if, so you're saying that in terms of location to school facilities and children, that there's nothing that a city can do to restrict their, their, at least their location or zoning?
The, the problem that you would face, or even if, let's assume the city has the power, you're talking about changing our zoning code. And even if you change our zoning code, we can't apply it retroactive, retroactively to existing businesses. So if you don't like the fact we currently have twenty businesses, we can't go in now and say, we can only have ten. And we're going to pick these ten to be out of business. So even if we have that power under our zoning code, we could only apply the new zoning law prospectively. We can't take away people's rights that have already been granted under our laws and the state of Ohio laws.
Okay, I, I was asked that same question in relation to one of the facilities that's relatively close to the school. And as, as the law director said earlier, there is a provision in the law that deals with alcohol and liquor stores and, and a, a distance from school to school boundaries. So if there is to be a law that says that, it would have to be a law that the state put into effect. You, if you try to do it through zoning, it would be next to impossible to do because standalone stores are not the only store that sells these products. So and even if, even if we did that, we might be eliminating some major businesses that sells these products and would not be allowed to move into certain areas. You might have a, a grocery store that wanted to, that, that wanted to move into an area, but they also sell these products. I'm thinking about a number of years ago when we made the law about no liquor store, no restaurant selling alcohol on one, on certain side of two seventy-five. You, you really run into a lot of problems because you could make a law that may keep out somebody that you don't want. But at the same time, that same law may prohibit you from getting a business that you do want.
Um, yeah. Mrs. Moore?
And I, yes.
Um, I know that, and I, I really appreciated you bringing this forth with the concern about, at least if I understood it correctly, the concern about that vape store being so close to the high school, right? I think that's what it was.
So, yeah, Councilwoman Clark, that was my concern, but my other concern was that other vape establishments occurring throughout Forest Park. So we don't want Forest Park to have five and six vape because, you know, vape businesses, because that doesn't look good. Vaping is dangerous. And, and so we don't want to, we don't want to be that city who has a vape establishment in every part of our community. And so that's why I was asking, did we have any opportunity to kind of limit the number of vaping establishments in our community? So that's what I was kind of asking.
Is there a way, if, if we can't, if we're unable to do that, which may appear so unless I'm missing something. But if we're unable to do that, Ms. Moore, could we, could you with the we thrive, do you think that there's some element of education that we could provide, especially our high school, at the high school level? To kind of mitigate some of that interest?
So that's occurring right now. Hamilton County Public Health is into the school districts and they're educating on vaping. And of course, We Thrive has pushed, you know, a tobacco-free parks, et cetera. But yes, the school district has partnered with Hamilton Public Health and some training around that. And so that was one of my concerns as well is we're training in the schools, we're promoting our students not to use these products, but then we have a vaping shop built, well, across the street. So it, it's an issue, I think, it's an issue. And I just don't want them popping up throughout our community because we're trying to tackle tobacco use, any product, because we want a healthy community. And that's why We Thrive was developed because, you know, we have a high incident of hypertension in our community, tobacco use, and we're trying to educate our community to be healthy. And so you can't do that when you have establishments that promote things that aren't as healthy. So that's, that was kind of where I was going with that.
I have a question. I'm not familiar, I'm, I'm not familiar with vaping. Is it illegal?
No.
It's not, but the preliminary studies that have been performed, especially in Europe, it is extremely dangerous. I mean, there's no filter. You're just getting so is there chemical, even the chemicals aren't even.
Is there an age limit that can purchase whatever it is? As I said, I'm not familiar with vaping. Is there an age limit? So then, so it, it doesn't matter where it's located. It's on the, the retailer of the person that's selling it, whether they're selling it to the kids or not. Because they're going to go to Kroger's and buy a pack of cigarettes. If Kroger's going to sell them to them, they're going to go to the next gas station and buy a pack of cigarettes if they're going to sell them to. It's not healthy. Neither are potato chips. So we're just, I mean, it's, it, I mean, that's a stretch to me.
Well, I, I think, I think too, you know, if, you know, that, as John stated very early, that there are some things that we are allowed to do and there are some things that we're not allowed to do. If you want to attack this problem, it has to be at the state legislature level. And what, what happens there is, and I will tell you, you know, I've done this for thirty years. The legislature makes decisions based on dollars and cents. And even when they give, when you quote, give you something, they don't really give you anything. A case in point would be the liquor board. You know, you would think that a city would have the right to decide who gets a liquor license, where, what, where those places can be located. All we basically can do is if somebody applies for one and we don't like it, we get a chance to tell the, the liquor board, we don't like it. But we don't get to make the final decision either. And I think you'll find that the same thing is going to be true of this. So my recommendation would be contact your state legislature, your state legislators and see what, if anything, what they're thinking is because they are going to be ultimately the people who have to put forth any kind of legislation that they think would, would be sufficient. And and it's going to end up being like, not end up, but it, it would be like so many other things. Hundreds and hundreds of bills go into the hopper every year in, in any session of the legislature. Very, very few of those get passed first base because they just don't look at them as being important enough. And frankly, you know, you're asking the legislature to take away a source of income. You know, normally, most people think in terms of health above income, but then it very rarely works out that way. And that's, it, it's an unfortunate thing, but it, you know, a, a, a case in point that that's happening right now. We have a number of guidelines about what can and cannot happen in terms of the pandemic. But if there's nobody enforcing those things.
You died out, Chuck.
Yeah.
See, I see you flashing.
Chuck may have, his, his connection may have dropped.
Yeah, it's frozen.
Well, suffice it to say, we, we can assume that the business owner will, you know, abide by the applicable laws.
Exactly.
However, about advertising and the signage being at the very edge of the, the plaza across from the high school. But I mean, we're going to assume Goodwill on every, on the interest of.
For some reason or another, I got disconnected. So, but.
Is there a current list of these businesses that are kind of showing up that's selling this product within the city of Forest Park? Do we have a?
We would, that, we wouldn't know that unless we actually went out and looked. And even if we, you know, like I said, it's not, really, it's not limited to a standalone business. Anywhere, anybody that can sell cigarettes can sell these. I guess that's the short answer.
Okay.
Okay, we will move next to the clerk of council report, Mrs. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers twenty-five dash twenty twenty through twenty-nine dash through twenty-nine dash twenty twenty and resolution numbers forty-six dash twenty twenty through forty-eight dash twenty twenty were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Any, any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you. Next item is item number nine, new business. Before that, there is a motion, Councilwoman.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty by title only.
Second.
And moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolution forty-nine twenty twenty by title only. Is there any discussion?
Just that it was posted as required.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda under new business is item A, Resolution Number forty-nine dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty. A resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number forty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Moving second, they would adopt Resolution forty-nine dash twenty twenty. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, just, it was mentioned above in our work session and it was posted six days prior to our meeting. I urge adoption.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution forty-nine twenty twenty?
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution forty-nine twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion, Councilwoman.
I move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
And moved in second that we receive the general fund summary report as reported as contained in the departmental report. Is there any discussion?
Oh, sir.
Yes, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye. Posed. Motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item C, another motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion to convene to an executive session to review the performance evaluation of the city manager and the law director.
Second.
And moved in second, we convene into executive session for evaluation of the city manager and the law direction, law director. Then a discussion.
Only that, I would like John to be first. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to, for executive session?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn into executive session passes seven zero. There will be no official business will be taken up during this executive session. And when we're done, we'll come back out and close, uh, close the executive session and go back into the regular session and then adjourn. So I need a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the regular council meeting.
Second.
And move the second that we adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the regular council meeting. Is there any discussion?
And none.
There's none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Posed, none. Is there any other business to come before the council? Hearing, I, I, just, just so, and I know you all maybe saw the notice, but I will say it as a reminder to you and to the public. Next Monday, the twenty-eighth, because of the CARES funding, we will have a special council meeting that will begin at seven P M. And it will probably be a relatively short meeting. There's a resolution that we have to put forth, and I believe it's a rather, maybe an ordinance, ordinance or rather, it's an ordinance that we have to pass in order for us to do, to make sure we get the money and spend it right and have spend it right and make our report. So to beat the deadline, although the deadline has been extended. So don't forget, next Monday to twenty-eighth, seven P M, and Sally will send out the appropriate notices. Sally, I'll be by, call me in the morning, let me know what time to come by and sign papers.
Okay.
Anything else for the good of the order? You all be safe and everybody have a great holiday. Stay away from crowds. Don't be hanging out, out there. It's supposed to snow actually Thursday. Rain, rain mixed with snow, so we'll see.
Happy holidays, everybody.